Good evening. As you may know, the board met this afternoon at 4:30 and at that time we had the pledge and the moment of silence, so we're going to move on into our meeting. We met in a special called meeting for the purpose of appointing the collaborative conferencing management team that will begin a new process in January. I just want to thank Superintendent Thomas, Specialist Rodney Russell, along with KCEA President Tanya Coats for making the special question committee and secret ballot process so easy and even a pleasure. I also want to express appreciation to Gloria Dethridge and Jennifer Owen, Robert Mitchell, and Isaac Standridge for their service on the committee. Are there changes to the agenda? Okay, Ms. Fugit.
Madam Chair, after we talk about Lawnsdale Elementary School, I would like to add an update on the strategic plan. I think it's time to let the board know dates. We've got dates set and ready to go ahead and start, so just at the end of that discussion, it doesn't need action, just an information, but I wanted it above the line, not in board forum.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Do I hear a motion?
Some moves.
Okay, motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, motion passes Superintendent Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The report is a little bit more lengthy this evening than normal, but I will go through it pretty quickly, so I just wanted to kind of give you an update on the administration of the ACT test at Bearden High School and what we've been able to determine at this point. I have appointed Dr. Keith Wilson as interim Director of Career and Technical Education effective November 20th, 2017. Dr. Wilson joined Knox County Schools in 2001 as a science teacher at Northwest Middle School and later taught at Holston Middle School. Dr. Wilson began his career in administration in 2009 when he was appointed Assistant Principal at Bearden Middle School. He served as the district's Teacher Advanced Program, tapped director for five years, and most recently was Director of Professional Learning. On November 8th, students in Knox County were joined by students from Oak Ridge City Schools and area private schools in an attempt to set the record for the most number of students participating in a computer science lesson in multiple locations at one time. The record was achieved and validated by Guinness Book of World Records, but we're still working to determine how high of a bar these students set. Official numbers should be coming in soon. Jamie Black, Assistant Principal at Holls Elementary, was selected as a fellow for the 2018 cohort of the Governors Academy for School Leadership. The statewide aspiring principals program has been tailored to prepare high caliber assistant principals to become transformational leaders in schools across Tennessee. Her selection is an indication of her excellence and ability, desire, and potential to become a transformational school principal. As a program fellow, she will have the opportunity to be trained in instructional leadership by some of the nation's leading experts at Vanderbilt University. She will also participate in a rigorous internship experience within this school district supported by her principal, Mitchell Cox, her mentor, Keith Kotrell, and the Tennessee Department of Education. Program runs from January to December of 2018. Congratulations to Dr. Sunny Pope, Principal of Hardin Valley Elementary School, on being named as a member of the 2017 Class of Forty Under Forty. Each year, Greater Knoxville Business Journal celebrates forty young leaders who are making a difference during the annual Forty Under Forty Award Ceremony. This event will be held on January 18, 2018. Principal Forday was on Tuesday, November 14th. Thank you to each of you who was able to attend. We were nearly able to put two principals for a day at each of our schools on this day, and it concluded with lunch and roundtable discussion at Sarah Simpson Professional Development Center. Our participants had a great time and gave some terrific insight into the work they witnessed being done in our schools, and I'm always so proud to hear other people who recognize the hard work that our principals do and our teachers do and our staff does in each of our schools. On November 16th, Paula Franklin was recognized with the Milken Education Award and a money gift of $25,000. This is an incredible honor for her, for West High School, and for Knox County Schools. Over the years, we've been very fortunate to have had several educators selected for this honor. Hey, finally, to talk about Bearden ACT just a few minutes here, I want to take this opportunity to share some additional information regarding Bearden High School's ACT administration. As part of the 2016 Tennessee Student Assessment Transparency Act, the General Assembly legislated that each student participating in the required assessment of post-secondary readiness as a junior shall have the opportunity to retake the assessment one additional time before graduation. Because all districts in the state contracted with ACT for their junior testing day in spring 2017, all seniors who participated had the option of retaking the ACT exam on either October 3rd or October 17, 2017, at no cost to them. Our district selected October 17 as our retake date for the ACT. All of our high schools administered the test to their seniors who wanted to retake the ACT exam. We were informed on Friday, October 27th, that Bearden High School had administered the October 3rd version of the exam rather than the October 17 version, which resulted in a misadministration of the test. Due to the misadministration, ACT informed us that the test results of almost all of the Bearden High School students who took the exam on this date would be voided. We've done our best to conduct a detailed review of the series of events regarding administering of the ACT. Now, I'll kind of go through those just step by step. But on August 18th, ACT sent an email to our testing supervisor in schools stating that testing materials for the October 17 test date would be shipped to schools the week of October 9. All KCS schools, including Bearden, received the testing materials on September 19th, actually a few weeks earlier than what we were told. According to procedures outlined in the ACT manual, Bearden should have opened the boxes and unpacked the contents within 24 hours. However, since the test arrived weeks earlier, the school opted to lock the materials up in sealed boxes until closer to the testing date. When the school opened the boxes on October 4th, there was no apparent cause for concern. Since Bearden was testing over 450 students, the testing team prepared testing bins on the evening of October 16 and secured the materials overnight in a locked office rather than preparing the volume of materials on the day of the test. Neither of these discrepancies would have had an impact on the erroneous receipt of the materials. ACT booklets do not have dates on them, however, ACT places one sheet of paper in one of the boxes that has the date the test is to be administered. The Bearden High testing team of five people reported never seeing the sheet in any of the boxes of materials. Upon checking with our 14 high schools, six high schools, including Bearden, reported not receiving this sheet in the materials for the October 17 test. So by not receiving that sheet, they had no way at that point knowing that it was an October 3rd test rather than an October 17 test. Also, ACT is responsible for scheduling pickup of all testing materials. According to the ACT manual, ACT will schedule this pickup on the next business day after the test administration. Bearden received a call on October 17 from FedEx verifying a pickup of materials on October 18. No one called or came to Bearden on October 4th, which would have been the date for the pickup of an October 3rd test administration. Once we were notified that ACT was not going to score most of the Bearden test, we went to work to appeal the decision. Friday, October 27th, KCS was first made aware of the misadministration. Wednesday, November 1st, KCS consulted with the Accountability Department at the Tennessee Department of Education and submitted the documentation to them that was compiled by Bearden High School. November 9th, ACT denied the appeal. November 15th, Commissioner McQueen appealed personally on behalf of KCS to reconsider their decision. Again, the appeal was denied. ACT indicated that Bearden failed to check the appropriate make-up date box. Based on our systematic procedures, one person at the school level and one person at the district level verified the make-up date of October 17 was selected in the Pearson Access Next Portal. ACT's response has been the October 17 date box was unchecked. After having made the appeals and receiving denials from ACT, Dr. John Bartlett and our staff have worked diligently to make sure students were registered in time to take the December 9 test. They have also been reaching out to colleges and universities to explain the situation and have had great success with that. Our students have been preparing their entire school career for the ACT, and we know how much hard work our children have invested to be able to take this test. We will continue to engage with the appropriate individuals and advocate on behalf of our students regarding the decision made by ACT. Madam Chair, members of the board, this concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Ms. Fugit?
Thank you. Mr. Thomas, has anyone talked to the governor? I mean, I understand that the commissioner reached out, but perhaps the governor of the state reaching out would also help.
To my knowledge, no one, I know I've not spoken with the governor, no one on our staff has that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've had issues with ACT before over testing, and they will not budge. And I've gone round and round with them, not only for my students, but for other students, that they claim did some things illegally. They don't take responsibility for when they make an error, and they don't back up. And that's my concern with ACT, period. So this doesn't surprise me. It just validates things that I've already known them to be, but I hope that we can get it changed for the students at Bearden, but this is not abnormal for ACT.
It would be very helpful, obviously, if they printed the date on the test, but one of our high schools did forward to our testing supervisor, Laurie Driver, the sheet of paper that was in the, that should have been in one of the boxes that, and I'll just read it, it says, "Test Coordinator, in this shipment of materials for the make-up test date, you'll find test booklets. Please use these test booklets only for the make-up test date of October 17, 2017. If the test booklets in this shipment are used for any other test date or testing period, this will result in misadministration of the ACT test, and examinees will not receive scores." So again, when we checked, six of our high schools did not get this or find this in their box, and eight of them did.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions for the superintendent? If not, then...
Madam Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. McMillan.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas, did, were there any other scores invalidated except the ones at Bearden? Bearden is the only one so far. I think there were 22 students who took the test, had accommodations at Bearden, those scores, I think, were accepted. Actually, I think three students out of those that were invalidated received scores, but those were retracted for some reason, so I don't know exactly why.
Why were the 22 accepted?
Well, they were students with accommodations, so...
Oh, oh, oh. Well, across the state, I know that from what was in the paper, there was some problems at, I believe it was York Institute. Were there any problems anywhere else, and do you know approximately how many other sites on that particular date were taking the test?
No, no, sir, I don't. I just know from what I read in the paper that Allen C. York Institute was one of the ones in the state of Tennessee. I don't know, I'm not aware of anyone else. I don't know if Dr. Reiswick, you know, of any other district that...
Well, this is just a guess, but I would think that there would be several others across the state, wouldn't there, Dr. Reiswick?
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. To our knowledge, that's the only one that we know of, but we haven't been able to ask that of ACT nor have they, you know, told us that. There were other, last year, there were some other, Hamilton County had some, some other districts had some issues with their test administration and misadministration as well, but to our knowledge, as Superintendent said, all we know right now is Allen C. York.
So, let me see if I understand this correctly. We have no way of knowing whether the test was being administered at five other sites across the state or, you know, 25 or more sites across the state on that particular date? Is that what you're saying?
For that particular date, as the superintendent, that's a little better, as the superintendent said, there were, there were two dates that we could give that senior retake, and one was October 3rd. We had our career day going on at that point, so we chose October 17th. So that was another date for that. So as far as how many tests were given across the state, I mean, the state would probably know that on the 17th, but we haven't gotten that information.
Well, that was where I was going. I was just wondering, I was aware of, from what I'd read about the York Institute, but I just wondered if there were others that, you know, were valid.
It's not, I mean, again, not to our knowledge right now. York was the only other place that we're aware of in this area, but, you know, we don't have a way to validate or confirm that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Coats.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a clarification question regarding the actions taken to make up for this. So are the students who took the test at Bearden getting to take another one free of cost? Like, okay.
Yes, free of cost. Voucher, I think ACT is providing a voucher for the students to take the test at no cost.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Norman?
Thank you. Mr. Thomas, how many of the students' scores were invalidated at Bearden?
I believe there was 409, John, does that seem, sound right? Over, a little over 400.
How many of them are getting the voucher to take December 9?
I think the last I heard was like 263 maybe that are retaking the test.
Yeah, that's, it's, yeah, the 250 range, we had it, sorry. Sorry about that, thank you. We, I think we were in that 260 range, 240 range, somewhere in between there. There were, there were some students who initially had signed up to do that, and then some chose to not do that. After they had chosen to sign up through their counselors, Dr. Bartlett and his counselors actually pulled every student of the 409 in and had them, and talked to them. Some were already registered for that one before any of these things happened because they, you know, they just wanted to take it, so they were trying to find out ways for one more chance to be able to do that so that it wouldn't cost them. But even students who were choosing not to, who had already had another ACT test, they were actually were checking a paper, having a conversation with the counselor whether they wanted to or not. So every student who was affected was talked to by a counselor about their options.
Okay, but that still leaves quite a few that are sort of in limbo, and these are the ones that are considering legal options and all that kind of stuff.
I, that, I mean, I've heard some of that, but I haven't talked to any of the families directly. There was, I think there was some discussion of that, that I think a parent had emailed Dr. Bartlett asking that question. There was some question about some of the booklet, the registration booklet that comes with the ACT. There's some language in there that is over my head. Gary Dufoor could probably weigh in on that, but it talks, it speaks to some different class action lawsuit types of things, but after reviewing that further, it's the same registration booklet for every ACT test. So there wasn't new language put out just because of this, this error or this misadministration. It's the same book they use for all of those. So I think that language exists across the board, but Mr. Dufoor may have thoughts on that.
Yeah, Mr. Dufoor did, was, were some of the ones that got invalidated that weren't, had chosen not to take the December 9 test, they were giving, they were giving counsel not to if they were considering legal action, right? It was like if you took the test, if you took the retest December 9, somehow that knocks out your standing, so to speak, for legal action.
I think there's a little bit of misunderstanding there, Mr. Norman. So, so like Dr. Reiswick was talking about, each of the students signed up with ACT directly, and when you sign up with ACT, and normally it's done online these days, but when you sign up with ACT, there's a boilerplate agreement that each student and their parents have with ACT. And that boilerplate agreement includes language that talks about you won't sue ACT, you won't be part of a class action, you'll go to arbitration, et cetera. So, you know, I know there were some parents that were expressing concern about signing up for the December ACT test date, but frankly, they'd be signing the same agreement that they already signed for the October date.
Okay, got it, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Reiswick. Okay, we are going to see, Mr., yes, John Beckett, I was looking, okay. Director of Research and Evaluation is going to give us a report, accountability report on ESSA.
Well, good evening. I've got 18 slides of joy to work through, and the last one says questions. First of all, just talk about ESSA. ESSA is the current rendition of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which began originally in 1965. You are probably more familiar with the 2001-ish version, which was No Child Left Behind, the Bush reauthorization of the same act, but this all stems back to 1965. And this was redone a couple of years ago. Until this year, we have been operating still under No Child Left Behind. It did not go away, but we were granted a waiver a few years prior, and we've been working off the waiver, and little by little, the state has worked its way towards what their, the state's rules are for ESSA, because ESSA is a little bit broader, and each state had to submit what they planned to do with it and within certain guidelines. And so we've just recently, within the last few months, gotten the state version of things, and even within the last couple of weeks, have been getting more and more details. In fact, in front of me, I have something that has the word draft on it because it's not finalized quite yet, and this is not too big of a surprise because even as last year, some of the rules within that particular waiver did not get finalized until April, and some of the tests, parts of the tests that had already been taken that students were going to be evaluated by. So that's just a brief history. I'm going to look at two portions of this, district accountability and school accountability, and go back with the history, No Child Left Behind. For those of you who were in the classroom, in schools, or in schools at that time, you may remember that that was very, the accountability was school-driven, and if you were a struggling school, you felt the weight of it. The districts did not. The conversion here is, as we go on, is that the district is the primary arena for accountability, and the district then works down to the schools generally, not entirely. So I've got, I've got this thing on, bam. So we're going to start with district accountability. Here's a quote from the state plan, which you can find online, a quick Google search will get it for you. It's very long, but most of the accountability occurs around page 70 to page 100 or so. And that is, "Tendencies Approach Accountability is Based on the Theory of Action, that one of the primary roles of the state is to monitor district outcomes." So this is the rules of the game. How is the state going to evaluate what we're doing? We start out with a few terms. Their grade bands are split into three. This is a little bit different than what they've done before, the old plan. It was K-8, and then it was 9 through 12. We're looking at six performance areas, the TCAP assessment, even though you're familiar with TN Ready, TN Ready is just the name of the current TCAP, which is the Tennessee Comprehensive Assessment Program. ACT is now included. TCAP, which is the Tennessee Comprehensive Assessment Program. Uh, ACT is now included. The graduation rate has been there as a separate entity, but now it's firmly within there. Chronically out of school, this is a, not only is this new, the name is new, it, it had been, uh, called absence, but they changed it from absence to being chronically out of school. So it doesn't matter if you are missing school for a field trip, uh, I shouldn't say it, but for, for various, field trips do count, they're all right, you're still in school. But, uh, if you are suspended, or if you're sick, it doesn't distinguish between the two. If you're not available for instruction, you are out of school. And if you are out of school, uh, more than ten percent of the time you have available, you basically get, you're on that, that checklist of one of the students that's, uh, chronically out of school. And then we have, uh, the, uh, English Language Proficiency Assessment, ALPA, uh, which is relatively new as well. We had, had, uh, an assessment called the WIDA prior to this, and this is, this combines aspects of the WIDA, uh, but it's looking at that English language learner population. The subgroups, this is the, the extra bonus piece of paper that you have in front of you, the acronym that was not defined at all, and, and that was my fault, because I've been working with this so long, and it's been the same for a long time, that I did not consider that some people are new to the game. BHN is Black, Hispanic, and Native American. It's those three ethnic groups combined. Anyone in, any of those, uh, is considered a BHN student. Why those three? Because they, they have been, uh, historically underperforming the state average. So if for some reason, a different ethnic group were, uh, to fall below the state average, or one of these went above the state average, it would change. But it's been BHN for a while. ED is economically disadvantaged. This has changed also within the last couple of years. So things, things have been going on. In the past, it was primarily free reduced lunch, and nowadays, it's, it's the directly served population. So different level of poverty. This is a little more extreme poverty than, uh, with the free reduced lunch, which had kind of levels of poverty with free, reduced, that kind of thing. SWD, Students With Disabilities. We normally think of that as special ed, but there's more than just special ed students within Students With Disabilities. And then, uh, EL is English Learners. And the combined subgroup is a new entity, and that is for, specifically for smaller schools and districts that may not have the requisite number of students to create a subgroup, which is thirty. And if you don't have thirty of any of those, odds are, if you combine all those things together, you'll probably have at least thirty. And it combines any student that is any of those things and puts them together in something called the super subgroup. It was called the super subgroup in some renditions, uh, now it's being called the combined subgroup. Within the pathways, wanna address the question right now, or?
Yeah, if that's okay. Uh, would you hit that economically disadvantaged again? You said, uh...
Directly served.
What's, what's that?
That means, uh, receive, uh, SNAP, uh, this food assistance, welfare essentially.
Okay, so no longer free and reduced?
Not free and reduced. So if you, if you look, it's, it's a smaller, uh, percentage. For an example, our percentage went down roughly from when we were dealing with free reduced, down to the, uh, to the current ED population. We reduced by, what, roughly thirty, twenty-seven percent? I'll just make that up and say it with authority. But it's somewhere, it's somewhere in the twenty percentages.
Less.
Less, right. Uh, the reason for that, there, there's a couple of reasons for that. One of it, the things is, is we were dealing with some schools, we had the, uh, CEP, Community Eligible Provision, where we provided free lunch to, to everybody within the school, and, uh, and, and some districts were in fact, uh, CEP districts. And then the only way to determine who was free reduced lunch, we had something called the Household Survey, which we got actually pretty good at doing, and, and we had a, a pretty good balance, uh, with that. But I think that was one of the impetus, an impetus for this, to go to this, this route. All right. The pathways are three, uh, and we're gonna, we'll combine two of them, uh, before we, uh, into one. Value added is the, the same old T-VAS that we're familiar with. Um, annual me- annual measurable objectives are old things. They've been around for a long time. Uh, how they determine those has varied over the years, but now it's, it's pretty much settled in. And I can give you an example, uh, because I've been to plenty of schools. And basically, if you were going to look at the, the, uh, success rate, uh, for, for those students who are on grade level or mastered, and let's say, uh, using a, a convenient number, that sixty-eight percent of the students were on track, that's the, the ELC version, are on grade level or mastered, the percentage that wouldn't be on ma- uh, on there, which would be below or approaching, would be thirty-two. And we take that number divided by sixteen. And, uh, the thirty-two divided by sixteen is two, so the annual measurable o- objective would be to increase by two, from a sixty-eight to a seventy. The rationale behind that was to decrease those students that were not essentially proficient or advanced in the old days by half in eight years. So you divide by two, divided by eight. So that's where the divided by sixteen comes in. Why? Why is that a special number? I don't know, but it's been there for a while. Uh, and, uh, some of the, the new things that we'll, we'll, we'll use that same number a little later on, because the, the way that it's gonna score out is, did you hit your annual measurable objective? Did you double it? So, and if you were at sixty-eight, and if you had seventy, that you, you would hit it, but if you doubled it and got to seventy-two, you hit your, your plus two twice, then you get the highest score possible. And we'll take a peek at that. So, and then the, the, the last thing is the absolute performance. So this is brand new. This is, I would say, uh, this came from a, a group of the, of the higher performing districts that were advocating for this. We, as a district, we, we got a kind of broad range of schools, but the, the higher performing school, students that may not have actually very good value added, and saying that, you know, our students, they're performing so well, they can't grow, or that kind of thing. So this was legislated in, and for each of the metrics, they came up with an absolute performance. And I've got just an example right here. Uh, and keeping in mind, as we go on, that everything's kind of on a, on a GPA kind of idea of zero to four. And so if a school or a district, you will get four points for graduation rate if you have ninety-five or above. So it doesn't matter if you actually went from ninety-seven to ninety-six, you still get the highest value for absolute performance. So the relative performance, you did worse than if, and there is a, even a value added for graduation rate, which is somewhat convoluted, as they're still working out in this draft. Uh, but they would go down on the one, but they would, they would hit it on the absolute performance. And, uh, just maybe, uh, one, one more of those. Uh, for, for overall success rate, uh, districts receive four points if the success, success rate is fifty percent or greater. So the state realizes that the assessments and how they're graded is much more difficult than it had been. So if you get fifty or above, you are, you get a four, and you get a three if you have between forty-five and forty-nine point nine. So for all of the metrics, there's an absolute pathway, absolute performance pathway. So that's a lot of the, the stuff at the beginning. Once again, e- even as we look at the details, this is still intended to be just a broad brush stroke of what's going on here, because again, the, uh, even the, the particulars, the protocol is, is fifty pages and the, and the document itself, it's based on, is three hundred. So, and this, you should be thankful for your eighteen slides of fun. Uh, or we could hang out here a while, but that would probably bother some people from Lonsdale. Hello, all right. All right. So what is the process? There's the first thing, it's a minimum performance goal. This is brand new. Once you, we look at that, we'll look at what, what schools do with, schools and districts do with all students. So just as, as a big group, what are you doing? How did you do against what you did last year? Did you grow? And all the rest? Did you hit your AMO? All that for all students. Then we do it again for subgroups, the four subgroups that you have before you, the BHN, the, the ethnic subgroup, the SWD, ED, and EL. And then, uh, we go, come up with the, the final district status. The hardest of those things is actually the minimum performance goal. It's got just a ton of stuff in there. And the, the first and, and primary one for us that is, uh, our attention is drawn to the participation rate goal of, you must test ninety-five percent of your students. And that's what it's been for a while. It was that way under No Child Left Behind, but there's something new. Not only must you test ninety-five percent, you must test ninety-five percent of all students in all subjects and in all grade bands and subgroups. And that can be very difficult. We have discussed this with the schools, and, and what this means is if you have thirty students, you have a subgroup. So let's say you have thirty special education students, students with dis- uh, disabilities. And, um, if you have, of those thirty, one, one kid misses, all of a sudden, your, your participation rate is right there at ninety-five percent. If two kids, for some ra- reason miss, you all of a sudden miss it entirely, and you get the, the, uh, you get dinged for that. And it can be harsh how you are dinged, and, and a district as well. In our case, we have far more than thirty students, but, uh, a particular example is if we take a look at the grade band of high school, the subject of English, and if we, uh, look at, uh, our English learner population, out of all our roughly sixteen to eighteen thousand high school students, that's looking at a pool of two hundred and ten. And again, it doesn't take that many to miss the ninety-five percent goal. So we're, we're concentrating very hard on testing, testing everybody, and we've been doing a good job, but now we're focusing even more on the, the various subgroups with that. So, I see that question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanna clarify, John. So ninety-five percent of all students in all subgroups, even though they've specifically called out now the chronically out of school group, and yet, we're supposed to, we have to have this ninety-five percent participation, or we're, we're dinged for that.
Right.
Am I understanding that correctly?
That is true.
And they have not sent us any sort of magic wand to, you know?
No, it, it, what it takes is, is diligence, and, and, yeah.
I mean, you know, uh, no offense to you, it's, it's, it's frankly, it's not diligence. Our teachers and our principals bend over backwards to try and get our kids there, especially our kids that are chronically out. And this is, this is not to you, it's just to the system in general. I think it's frankly absurd that, that this subgroup is pulled out and we're expected to have this participation rate. I mean, it frankly sets up any district for failure, but particularly large urban districts.
I will agree that it, it tends to hit the larger districts harder.
Ms. Horn, did you have a question? Okay.
I did. Let me ask you a question. So if a student leaves the state, or if they transfer to another school, or your records aren't necessarily correct, because you're still wondering where the kid is, you still get dinged, right?
There are...
How, how do they figure that?
Well, there, I mean, there are, there are aspects that, that are helpful for, that are protections for, especially for teachers, and how their value with the T-VAS, student has to be, uh, at least, have, have membership, memberships be there at least sixty percent of the time in a school, for the school, and for the teacher, they've got to be within there at least five, six of the time. So there's protection for, for them. But for the district as a whole, basically, if they are on your books and enrolled, and during that testing window time, they're expected to test. And I will say that, uh, that there, the testing is a window. So you've got a, a span of a, of two or three weeks there, depending on how it starts and finishes, to get a kid in and test. So we, we've, we've looked at, real hard at, at, at some places where, uh, they didn't do it as well. In some cases, our experience has been that, uh, some kids actually stopped coming to school, but were left on the rolls, in the hope that they would come back to school. But, uh, we saw that, well, this kid hadn't been there since February. And so in the end, it ended up dinging the chronically abs- out of school, uh, and, as well as the test participation. So our advice to our schools and to our principals is that to keep your enrollments clean. It's the best way we know how to say it. But we knew that they, they worked very hard, and, and those that do hit the hundred percent for the various subgroups are, are just really proud. And a large number of our elementary schools test a hundred percent of their kids. So, uh, but they have received earlier this year, every subgroup, what percentage of students tested, and so they've got, they've got data showing how well they did last year. So that's, that, that is a hard one. Then after that, the minimum performance, uh, the rest of these three, we do not have any problem with, we haven't historically. The achievement, you've got to increase, uh, the percent of the on-track or mastered in, in just at least one of those things. ELA, uh, math and science, or within the at least one grade band for that combined. So we combine English, math, and science together as one pool, you know, what, what percentage were on-track or mastered compared to last year. As long as we hit it in elementary, or middle, or high, we're good. Value added, get a three or better, as long as you get at least one group, you're good. And that has not been a problem as long as I've been doing this, uh, for the last decade or so. Uh, and then the subgroup improvement goal, uh, is a little bit different. Uh, in the past, subgroup, the, the, uh, subgroup improvement, we looked at gaps between, uh, the, the haves and the have-nots, the, the ED and the non-ED, and where we're shrinking the gap. And that's not how it's gonna be to be done any longer. It's gonna take a look at, uh, though, the, what percentage of students are below at the bottom of the four levels, and did you shrink that in at least one of those places? And we did a, a really good job with that last year, too. So historically, we've been able to hit those things, we're just having to, uh, focus a little more attention on the participation rate. All right, so once you, once you get past the minimum goal, we take a look at all students. We combine them all, all these students together. We do not look at, uh, race ethnicity, uh, special ed status, or any of that kind of stuff. And we take the better of the absolute performance and the, the AMO, and that's half of it, and then, and value added is, is half as well. And we look at it for those six items, and we'll see those six items over and over again. And I think it's probably best to look at what's called a heat map. And, uh, where we see this, uh, this example, all student heat map, uh, it has the absolute performance and the AMO. And so for that first one, for the grades three through five, their success rate, uh, they got a one, they got a, a four, the better of those was a four. We're gonna keep the four. So in those first two columns, uh, in the, that aren't filled in just white, we take the better of those two. Then value add them, value added doesn't, uh, get any wiggle room, uh, it is what it is. And then we just take the average of those two. So for that three, five success rate, we just average four and a two, and we come up with a score of three. And again, in the big picture here, think of this like a grade point average kind of thing. So a three point oh would be a B. Uh, a two point oh would be a C, a four point oh would be an A. And then once, uh, this is done, we, we average all that stuff together. I say we, but it's really the state that's doing this, to come up with the, the overall score. This, the average here for this would be the two point three three, and the, that has the word advancing, and we'll see what that means before we're done here. So we do this for all students, and then we go back, and we, we do it again for all the subgroups, for the, the four main subgroups. And we do it, uh, piece by piece. And so they get their individual, all four subgroups go through the same process, and those are put together. And here's a heat map that combines all of the subgroup heat maps. So for this, uh, example district, and once we take all the, all the bits and pieces together, on the bottom, that says the subgroup average, uh, we, a weighted average is used. So that means if you've got a hundred economically disadvantaged kids and, and fifty English learners, that you take the, the ED times, it has twice the weight as, uh, the English learner. So it is reflective of the population to come up with a number. And all that leads to the final status in the end. And the final status will be one of five things. A school that doesn't get through the first gate, the minimum performance goal is in need of improvement. And then, the subgroups and the all students are combined in a sixty-fourty ratio. This is one of those things that, at the state level, Commissioner McQueen went around to all these various places and got their opinions. Uh, she had focus groups, we participated in, in one of those, uh, groups there, and , uh, they landed on the sixty-fourty. And once they're there, if you're not in need of improvement, you're one of the, these marginal satisfactory, advancing, or exemplary. So, uh, if you think, once again, the grade point average, if you're three point something, you're exemplary. If you're between a two and a three, you're, you're considered advancing. And that is district accountability. Bouncing into school accountability, somewhat similar. Quote from the same, uh, document, "Districts are then expected to manage the school performance within the framework provided by the state." The thing that's different, uh, in addition to the heat maps and that kind of thing, is for the first time, that, uh, all schools will be getting a letter grade from A to F. This was not an optional thing. This, uh, this is coming from the state, but the state is coming from... This is coming from the state, but the state is coming from the federal government, the US Department of Education. So you can thank Lamar Alexander, go across the river, because he had a big part in this. So this is one of those, one of those items that was, they weren't going to compromise on that. So everybody's going to get an H and F. In the past, we've had grades at the elementary and middle school level for value added. We've had it for achievement, and there's been some complaints, especially at the elementary school, the value added was only two grades, but this will take that whole three through five as a big chunk, and it's going to combine it with achievement and the value added, and everybody's going to come up with a letter grade from A to F. So that is branded, yes?
John, I read some federal stuff, I just, you know, Googled it, went into SAA, and started to read about the grade, the grade to assign a grade to a school. And what I could tell was, they want to differentiate between schools. But that wasn't, but how to differentiate, wasn't, when a grade was not applied to that, specifically in the federal stuff.
Right.
Okay? So that's a choice by the state of Tennessee.
I think it's a choice by our state to use the grading system as their means of differentiating. But I think that a large number states, I don't have the exact number. I think that's a common way that people interpreted that.
And an aside to that, then, is another aspect of the first part. When you said the rules of the game, the rules of the game, it also noted that local school boards had, could participate in the rules of the game, and defining the rules of the game. I've never heard of anything about us being invited to anything about how the rules were set up for SAA. And maybe there has been, but I hadn't heard about it.
When I went to the institute in DC, Lamar and John King both made a very big point of telling local school boards to get involved immediately if they wanted to have a say in this. The way this was done, from my understanding, was the State Department of Education, in my opinion, took it over, and they appointed committees, and as I think Mr. Beckett said, they were asked to be a part of a focus group. But as far as actually going to individual school boards, the only representation that we probably had was with the SBA, is my understanding of this. I don't think actual boards were, as a board included. But that was not what was conveyed on the national level. That's what happened after it left the national level.
And I'll say, Commissioner McQueen went on her listening tour, where she went to various places. And she did stop in Knox County, I think it was kind of an open forum, and I think, if I recall, they made it Central High School for this region, for to hear, to get people's opinions. All right, so every, every school is going to get a letter grade. High schools have never received a grade under what we've done in the past. Okay, as far as school accountability from the state, other than what we do as a district in trying to support schools that are hurting a little bit, the items that the state does, they name priority schools every three years. A priority school is a school in the bottom five percent of achievement. And if a school is in the bottom five percent, they will get a letter grade of F. This is, this is new. In the past, we've had priority schools, and it's still been the bottom five percent, but that, it didn't automatically give you that F to their grade. We have had, the last time schools were named, we had four schools that hadn't, were priority, that back in that day would have been an F. I'm happy to say that if they had done it again this last summer, none of those four would have had an F, or been on the priority list. But they didn't do it last summer, they're going to do it this summer, after this year. So we're working diligently with those schools, a lot of extra effort going into that, so that they do not land in the bottom five percent. So priority schools, one designation of focus school, we've had focus schools in the past. In the past, it was based upon too extreme, too large of an extreme of a gap, between the, again, the special ed, the non-special ed. And now, the focus schools, when we look at the report card, anyone that ends up with a grade of D will be named a focus school, and allowed to get some extra support from the state. With another caveat is that a school doesn't have to be in the bottom, but they could be very low in one particular subgroup, and they would get a minus.
Ms. Hill, did you have a question? What did you want to preface?
Priority school, the five percent, is that state, based on the state's numbers or each system's?
That is in the state. So you, we can have, end up with none. There's one thousand two hundred eighty schools, and so, and five, so five percent are going to be, going to get it. And that, they do break it down by kind of the K through eight and the nine through twelve, and they take five percent of each, but it adds up to five percent overall.
And that's all schools? The charter schools, the-
Yes. Private schools, no, they don't have to, they don't receive federal money, right.
All the charters and-
Right.
Okay, Ms.-
Ms. Deffert.
May I ask?
Yeah.
So when we have tests and we don't count those tests, how they're going to say, whether we're in the five percent, or they're going to go back two years ago when we took tests and it was valid and it was used, or they're going to, what are they going to use?
They're going to do just whatever we do at this next testing cycle.
So really, you don't know if they progressed or not, from one year to the other, because we don't have data that goes two, three years in a row.
Well, okay, it's not a complete dataset, but you got to start somewhere, I think that's what they-
Well, it's unfair to say it's an F when they could have really improved. I'm just saying. I know, you're just-
We would like a complete dataset ourselves, yeah.
But, you know, this doesn't seem right to, they may have done better, but we don't know because we don't have the data to show that, what they did before. We know this is just SAA.
And the final thing I have on there, the reward schools, in the past, the reward schools have been in the top five or 10 percent based upon value added, based upon achievement. And now it's just going to be, if the school ends up with a letter grade of an A, they're going to be considered a reward school. And I think that we will do very well. I think our high achieving schools will like that, because typically, we've, in the past, the reward schools, you were knocked off the list if you had too large of a gap. And so when we look at some of our schools that are in the top, you know, top five percent of schools in the state academically, but yes, they were never on the reward school. It was a little bit frustrating for them, but that won't be the case anymore. So they will be rewarded for their achievement. All right, so a quick peek at what it looks like at schools, I've got it broken down into two groups. I'll go into one in a little bit more detail, and the other's very similar. Here's how it breaks down at the K-eight level, with the various pieces. Achievement forty-five percent, growth thirty-five percent, so that is the biggest chunks. And chronically out of school, and again, this is typically relative to the previous year. So the goal, if you have eight percent of your students that have missed ten percent or more there, of their opportunities, then your goal would probably be down to seven-point-five. How did I come up with that? I took eight divided by sixteen, always divide by sixteen, and that's a half. So you got to reduce it by a half, so to get down to seven-point-five percent. And then the English language proficiency exam. It should be pointed out that there are many schools that do not have enough, do not have thirty students in here. So what do they do then? They keep the chronically at ten percent, and they bump growth and achievement up by five percent each, and expand those as part of their grade. What's a typical grade look like? The A, B, C, D, for the, for the all students, you do for the subgroup, and then combine them like a GPA, sixty and forty, sixty percent and forty percent to come up with the final score in the end, for this particular example.
Thank you. Just a quick question. I worry that there's an unintended consequence that if you have a school without thirty English language learners, that you might, that might help you. That, so it sounds to me like the less diverse your school is, instead of forty-five, it's fifty percent and forty percent, and then only ten percent chronically, because if you don't have thirty students that are learning English, am I wrong, or is that an unintended consequence?
That is what it is, yes.
Okay, I just, has the state been made aware of that? I mean, I just, I just worry about that, because it's going to, I mean, Jennifer says yes, but it could disincentivize folks to make diverse schools. I just worry, I just worry about that.
I will say this, that they do give themselves the option to tweak this after the first year, if they see that unintended consequence. And the high school, it's very similar. We add one interesting item on that, and that is something called the ready graduate, which is different from just a graduate, graduate in general. As you see, the graduation rate is only five percent. And as we spoke with some of our high school principals, where the things that they can't control, it's nice that you're not going to get dinged too badly for, you know, kids that don't show up or that kind of thing. But the ready graduate is a new metric, it combines ACT performance and graduation rate. So it's among the graduates that have a twenty-one or better. And let's see how they progress, last year's cohort to this coming cohort. And again, it's the same kind of thing, though, as far as if there's not enough, a cohort for the ALPA, the achievement and growth go up to thirty-five and thirty. And the high school looks the same, it's just a little bit longer, all the pieces that go into that grade. Again, the computation is still just like figuring out a GPA with various weights. The predominant grade's going to win in the end, and then all students sixty percent, subgroups forty percent, combined together. And a quick comparison, what they were trying to achieve at the state level, they wanted the state, or the school accountability to look somewhat similar to the district. That's why they have five scales. At the, at the school level, it's A, B, C, D, F. At the district level, it's exemplary achieving and all the snook terms. They both combine all students and subgroups, and they have a minimum performance goal for the school. It's a minimum performance gate for the, well, for both of them. It hits them differently, for the district, we know it gives, it's a big ding if you don't hit it. At school level, it's like one of those little grades that we have in there, may turn into an F if you don't hit it. So it's not as heavy a hammer at the school level as it is at the district level. And that is the basis.
Okay, I see Ms. Giga has a question, and Ms. Coon's after her.
Thank you. This is not a fair question. I just prefaced that with, this is not a fair question, but since you live in this data, is our system going to look better or worse?
If we get through that minimum performance goal, we're going to look really good for a long time.
Good.
Because our value, value added is very high. And I will say, for large districts, value added, the way it's computed with the different levels, the larger your district, the more you tend to go to the extremes, the ones and the five. And for the most part, our history, we've been five-five-five, but I think one year we had the one in English. But for the most part, the fives. So in some ways, that does benefit us.
Okay, I mean, it-
I think it's going to be-
Because when you boil it all down, it's really all about us, and how do we look? And so, I mean, this is just as arbitrary as what they used before, but people will read these grades and, and they'll believe it. And I just wondered if we're going to be in for better or worse.
I think we're going to look all right. The way I think it may play out is more at the school level, when parents are moving into the district, where are they going to move?
That's really my point. District-wide, I suspect, we'll be fine, but are our schools going to look better or worse?
We have to see how it plays out, I think.
Ms. Coon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am still a little confused about the participation rate for subgroups. So I have a clarification question about the special, our students with disabilities group. So ninety-five percent of students with disabilities in our district are required to take what tests? The TCAP test, the ACTs?
It's, it's, the TCAP test, but there is something called the TCAP alt. It's an alternate for those students that do not function anywhere near a level that they could take the test.
What about the students who are non-verbal and non, like are not able to?
The alt includes the portfolio assessment, where the, there's just a list of things that the goals for the students, and did they achieve those particular goals, and then it gets scored out that way.
So involves our IP's and things like that?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that is taken in consideration with that. So that subgroup has a little bit more complexity to it than the other ones in calculation.
And then another aspect of that is when we look at the ACT, it's only students that graduate with a regular diploma do we look at their ACT. So if a student, we do have students that graduate with a special education diploma, although not that many. But they would not be a part of the calculations there.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that was being compensated for, just because, I mean, that may be really difficult for a district to achieve with that subgroup. And also, I was wondering, what in general are these scores used for?
Well, it's compliance with the state and how they're evaluating districts.
They want them, but what are they using them for?
They are, they're using them to officially differentiate according to what SAA requires. They're following the rules, yeah.
Ms. Giga.
I was just going to say, you know, the reality, all this comes about because citizens and parents want to know, are their public schools doing an adequate job educating their students? This is the government's attempt to try to figure out how you tell people that. May be good, may be bad, we've been dealing with this since nineteen-sixty-something, but that's really what it's all about, is so citizens and parents know whether their schools are doing a good job.
So it's putting the schools in like a student's position, you know, we're graded, but now-
And is the school district doing a good job?
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so a question on, I think it says in here that on the minimum progress goal, if you do not meet the participation rate goal, if you don't meet that, you're going to be a district in need of improvement, regardless of what your academic performance is. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, so that's where we are. So we missed testing a handful of kids, therefore we are a district in need of improvement.
In the, in the last rendition of, again, No Child Left Behind, where they were kind of bringing this stuff in here, they did bring in those particular rules, and that's where we ended up. And we were four kids short of testing within that group. But I will say that the state has really de-emphasized the accountability from that last year of No Child Left Behind. And they didn't do any press releases, they were here the same day that they were at Willow Springs, this came out. And the only reason I knew was because I dug around in the website and said, oh, look, there we are.
Because I think that the troublesome part is, if parents hear that we are a district in need of improvement, they automatically think that academically we are not meeting the standard, which is not the case. So I think it opens up a large possibility for misconception, and I think that's, I see that as possibly being a huge issue going forward. I mean, do you have concerns about that?
Well, the one thing I'll say is that on the state website, they put an asterisk for those that missed it because of participation rate.
That's a big consolation, isn't it, Ms. Horn? Ms. Giga.
Ms. Horn, I was going to say, I think it's just the proverbial problem of the school district. Our communications department has a hard time telling the positive story and getting out ahead of it. That's the, you know, trying to explain this ahead of time. But I think we're going to have to make sure our principals, teachers, everybody is prepared to explain that. The worst thing you can do is walk into a PTA meeting or a parent conversation and not be able to explain.
Okay, thank you.
How would you explain this at a PTA meeting?
No, I'm talking about the participation rate. We talked about why we made it.
But I'm talking about the whole thing. It's just, it's like, no way.
Okay, Ms. Horn.
Well, I think the problem is, it sounds like an excuse. If you tell, if you say- If you tell, if you say, well, the only reason we're, you know, we have that, it's so, it sounds so unbelievable that we're in need of improvement because we didn't test for students.
However, I will say, at West High School, back when I was foundation president, we were one of the top 1,200 public high schools based on one thing, and we were in needs of improvement based on another. And I just stood up at open house and said that and explained it. And I said, you know, it depends on what data you want to look at. I hear you, but I think you just gotta get out in front of it.
And like you said.
As best you can.
It is important that our principals understand so that they can explain that.
It's hard to explain.
It is.
We totally lost control.
Yes, thank you, John, for doing this presentation. But I do want to move on because we have a lot of people that have come tonight and moved into the Lonsdale Elementary School Sammy Hill Family Community Center proposal. And for that, I'll call on Julie Thompson, who is the Executive Director of Elementary Education.
Terry, can you help me with this, please? Thank you for the opportunity tonight to talk about Lonsdale Elementary and possible solution for our concerns there. Would like to say that we've been monitoring the enrollment and programming situation at Lonsdale for the last two or three years, and we have seen increased enrollment there. We have seen some culture changes there, lots of things going on, and we believe that we're at a decision point to address the needs of Lonsdale Elementary School. And I would like to start by saying, there have been no decisions made. This is a point that we have talked with the different departments, and we've shared concerns, we've heard concerns from the principal at Lonsdale, actually, both principals that have been there, and shared their concerns about their crowding, their situation. And so, last Friday, I visited the school so that I could see that firsthand. That has not normally been a school that I have directly supervised, so I have not been in that school. But I did go there to visit, and Wendy Hanser, the principal there, took me on a tour, and we visited every nook and cranny at Lonsdale Elementary School. And so, some things that you need to know is that currently, all of the classroom space that is available for students is being utilized. There are 175 English-language learner students with six full-time teachers who share one classroom in a portable. And there's at least two to three small groups happening in that particular classroom at any one time. It is an oversized portable, but to have three small groups of students working with each with one teacher can be a distraction to students. They're serving approximately 220 students in 39 intervention small groups, and those are happening throughout the day in various and sundry situations in the building. There is no portable space, available space, without impacting the current playground. I believe they have five portables on site now, and if we were to need to add a classroom to meet BEP for the next year, we would have to add a portable, and that would require us to take the current playground in order to have space there. Intervention and some ELL groups are being taught in the hallways, and multiple small groups are sharing one classroom space. As we walked the halls, I saw at least six different stations where teachers, TAs, different people worked with small groups of students throughout the day. Sometimes, space was used for an ELL group, other times, it was used for an intervention, a reading or math group. Wendy also told me that sometimes, the ELL group, which is a longer period of time, ELL is generally an hour, where intervention can be 30 minutes to 45 minutes at a time. But an ELL group might start in the hallway, and when this classroom goes to lunch or goes to the encore class, then this class gets up and moves all of their things into that classroom so that they can have a quiet space to work. There are no unused classrooms or ancillary spaces at Lonsdale, so there's, they are literally using every space that they have at that school. Currently, it serves approximately 407 students in K through 5. Last year, we moved two of the VPK classrooms from Lonsdale to Sammy Hill so that we had, we relieved some space issues there. And that went pretty well, although that was a change for them. They were used to having pre-K in their building as well. There are three Title I-funded classrooms to reduce the class size for instruction, and they are currently identified as a focus school due to student achievement. They are one of our most at-risk schools in the district, and I will have to say, in meeting with the teachers this afternoon, I shared this with them, and also when I met with Wendy on Friday, they have done a masterful job of rearranging their schedules, and it is obvious, the work that they're doing is about doing what's best for children. There are many places that teachers, teaching assistants are sharing multiple spaces, but I didn't hear anyone this afternoon complain about that. It was about how are we going to meet the needs of our students? And that was my concern. When Wendy talked to me about how she managed 37 ELA intervention groups and seven math intervention groups, and then all of her ELL students, I was like, oh, my gosh, she's got so many plates spinning, but I did not hear anybody complaining about having to do that. They were about doing what was best for kids. Currently, the music teacher there travels. She doesn't have her own classroom, so she has to go and visit each individual classroom to do her work with students. As I said before, numerous adults share spaces with two or three, even sometimes four other people. So we are in a unique situation in the Lonsdale community, where we have an underutilized building in the Lonsdale zone that could easily be converted to a primary school. Last year, some of our funding, our Title I funding was cut, and so a decision was made to reduce the number of pre-K classrooms at Sammy Hill. And while Wendy Lehman has done a great job of utilizing the space that she has been given in a variety of ways, with a gross motor lab and a parent room and a variety of things, it is underutilized in terms of the number of students that they serve. And so, we feel like that would create a possible solution to many of the concerns that we're certainly currently seeing at Lonsdale. So the recommendation, and again, I say, no decisions have been made, but this is an opportunity for us to bring our concerns to you and give you a chance to give us some feedback and direction in how to move. But our recommendation would be to move the current five kindergarten classrooms to Sammy Hill for this coming year, and move three of the pre-K classes and one voluntary pre-K classroom to other Title I schools with space in need. So we have other Title I schools across our district that have space and really an interest to have a pre-K class at their school, and have indicated that they would be willing to take a Title I. So as a district, we would not be losing pre-K classrooms, although we would move some from the Lonsdale school zone. And I would say to you also, the pre-K classrooms at Sammy Hill serve a variety of schools. They're not solely just Lonsdale students. They come from a variety of schools, so we have space to move them if that's needed. As I said before, there's adequate classroom space to meet the move, and we would continue with our current services. All special ed services, ELL services that are needed could be provided at Sammy Hill. That was for this coming year. For the following year, we would expect to move the five current first-grade classrooms to Sammy Hill to complete the transition to Sammy Hill as a primary school. That would allow us to have three years, because we would continue to keep the pre-K, some of the pre-K classes there. It would allow us to have a pre-K class grade level, a kindergarten grade level, and a first-grade class or grade level. That would allow us to have some continuity with our parents and develop a PTA and all of those things that would be necessary to have a successful primary school. It would also relieve much of the crowding situation that is currently at Lonsdale. For this coming year, they would have five available classrooms. For the following year, they would have 10 available ones.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
When you say you're gonna move five current first-grade classrooms, are those the five pre-K, five kindergarten classrooms that have moved to first grade? Are you talking about in addition to that?
So the students, the students would be kindergarten, rising kindergarten from Sammy Hill, but the teachers at Lonsdale would be the ones that move from first grade. Currently, initially, we talked about going ahead and moving K and 1 to Sammy Hill this coming year, but then that would create a situation where we would have to, we would have current kindergarten students at Lonsdale go to Sammy Hill for one year for first grade, and then have to go back to Lonsdale for second grade. So we thought that having a transition year would be best for the students. So they're going to have, this next year, they'll have pre-K and kindergarten. And then those kindergarten students will rise to first grade, and we will have the first-grade teachers from Lonsdale come over, because those first-grade students will be moving on to second grade.
Okay, so you're talking about the teachers, not necessarily the students when you say classrooms? Because I'm thinking that those kids are already there that's gonna be kindergarten that's moving to first grade. So you won't have to move them because they're already there, correct?
That's correct.
If they go in as kindergarten.
Right.
So when they come first grade, you're talking about moving?
The kindergarten students that are already, will have already been enrolled in Sammy Hill for this next year will be there to rise up to first grade.
Correct. So you're talking, when you say the next year that you're gonna move?
Will move the class, the first-grade classrooms, the teachers, their furniture, that sort of thing will be moved to Sammy Hill to serve those kindergarten students that will be rising.
That's why I was getting.
Sorry for the confusion, yes.
Ms. Fugit, do you want to go ahead with your questions?
No, she can finish her presentation.
Okay. Okay, go ahead and finish, and then this is all.
All right, so some potential benefits for Lonsdale would be dedicated space for intervention and ELL instruction to occur within the classroom settings. That would also, Sammy Hill also has space to have dedicated intervention and ELL classrooms as well. Potential BEP compliance issues would be resolved should there be additional increased enrollment. Lonsdale is somewhat of a difficult school to predict what the enrollment will be for the next year, just due to some of the movement within the community. And so, we're not sure exactly how many students will come. We've had guestimates of, you know, maybe as many as 40 or 50 new students that could come in the building, and if that's the case, then we would have some BEP issues. And so, if we go ahead and make this move, being proactive and not waiting until those students actually show up to try to solve for them, then we would have space for them. Should we wait and wait till those students actually come, then we would be forced into some sort of sharing of classroom spaces, possibly having two teachers share a room, because even if we were to order a portable, it would not be ready on the first day of school. And that would take some time, so. And then also, continued collaboration between the two schools for parent events, teacher vertical planning, and other community events. That would be important to make sure that there's communication between both schools, both on the teacher's side and on the parent's side, to make sure that we have cohesiveness at both schools. Some information about the Sammy Hill Community Center. They currently serve preschool students who are three and four years of age, and there's eight Title I-funded classes with a teacher and a teaching assistant in each class, and there's one voluntary pre-K classroom with a teacher and teaching assistant, and one special ed pre-K classroom with an assistant. With the exception of the voluntary pre-K classroom, custodial services, security, all of those expenses are paid through Title I federal programs. The Title I federal program was reduced last year, and a decision was made to reduce the number of pre-K classrooms at Sammy Hill, therefore, as I said before, creating additional classroom space. And there are currently several available classrooms at Sammy Hill. So there would continue to be six four-year-old classrooms at Sammy Hill that would be funded with Title I in 2018-19, and that number would reduce to three four-year-old classrooms for 1920, and a special ed class would remain as well. Title I could share the cost of the administrator and the secretary bookkeeper position at Sam Hill, and there would be minimal furniture expenses, as much of the kindergarten furniture could be moved to Sammy Hill as well. Both schools could share the majority of the encore teachers, speech and language, social workers, et cetera. And potential costs would be, and I attached the physical note to that for you to see. So some final thoughts about this. This solution, I believe, would improve the lives of children both at Lonsdale and Sammy Hill, and provide a more suitable learning environment for all children. One of the things, as I met with the teachers this afternoon, we had a discussion about, and they reminded me, when we first had a community meeting at Sammy Hill and mentioned this as a possible solution, we did say that there would be listening opportunities for parents and for teachers. And we really have kind of gotten into a situation of, is it the chicken or is it the egg that needs to come first? And so, I think you probably will hear from the teachers that they're concerned that this was, that we're talking about this, and they didn't have an opportunity to answer their questions or ask their questions. And so, as I shared with them, I think, once we hear what your wishes are, what your desires are, there are many questions that we can't answer because it didn't make sense to move forward and make decisions without knowing what your desire was. And once we hear from you, if your decision is to move forward with this, then we certainly would go out and meet with the teachers quickly, and to invite the community in to hear from them, and hear what they envision for Lonsdale and what they envision for Sammy Hill, to make sure that those schools are successful. I will share with you two on one last note, that while I was at the community meeting in September, I had a family to come up and speak to Mr. Thomas and I, and both parents were clearly working parents that loved their children and cared about them, and they were particularly concerned about their daughter and making sure that she was encouraged and taught at the highest capacity, because they really wanted their child to make sure that their children had an opportunity to have a better life than they do. And so, I would just encourage you, this might not be the ideal situation or the ideal solution, but we feel like it is one that is, helps us to be good stewards of our funds and create a situation that I believe needs to be addressed sooner than later.
Okay, Ms. Fugit.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments and then a question. First of all, I agree that coming to the board first is a good idea, because I don't want to hear about this in the street as though it's already being talked about, being done, so I appreciate you coming to the board and having this conversation with us. I also think this is not a new concept for us to have primary and intermediate schools I also think this is not a new concept for us to have primary and intermediate schools. We do it in other parts of the county. And the way I see this, that is what you're basically proposing, am I correct?
That's correct.
That those two schools would be linked, just like...
Just like Chilhawley and Sunnyview and Fairgarden, primary and intermediate.
Yes, so that is not an unusual concept for us. Also, I do think we have to do the, the talking and the listening, but I do like the idea of getting ahead of it, rather than us getting in a crisis when a school's overcrowded, which it sounds like this one already is. And I do like being a good steward of using a facility that's already paid for, rather than trying to, to build something else or add on to the school. This may be a short-term solution. It may not be the forever solution, and I think we do have to recognize that. My, my question really is, is this the professional recommendation of our staff? Because I figure at this point, this will come to us with a budget requirement in the, up, in the New Year's budget that the superintendent will present to us. And so I assume you're here to, with us before, before us today because this is the professional recommendation for staff to think that this is the best way to solve this problem in the short term.
I believe that's correct.
Okay. I mean, that's what we pay you guys for, is to give us a professional recommendation. And so, Mr. Thomas, do you support this proposal as well?
As we've discussed, yes, but again, what's important is community input.
Oh, absolutely.
And staff input as well, but, but yes. We feel like this is the best solution at this time.
What I'm hearing is everything's not tied down, but we are in a crunch situation and we're gonna have to do something, and this is the recommendation for the fix now.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Etheridge, if you don't mind, I'm gonna go to Ms. Hill and Ms. Owen, and then come back to you since it's your district, okay? So, Ms. Hill?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the work that's been put into this very much. What, what is the dis, distance between Lonsdale and Sammy Hill?
It's a, it's a very short distance, possibly two or three blocks.
Okay, okay.
Could be a little bit longer than that. I've not actually walked it, but...
Okay. So as far as, i, is this, are, are students bused here at all?
So in the Lonsdale zone, Lonsdale Elementary School sits pretty much primarily inside the middle of the Lonsdale zone, so they currently have no transportation services. That is one thing that I've spoken with Mr. Grubb about and Mr. Oaks, and we would need to look at, that's one of the questions that we, we still haven't answered. There is a possibility that perhaps on the fringes of the Lonsdale zone might be far enough away from the Sammy Hill to have some students outside the parental, the parental responsibility zone, so we haven't...
So there, there could be a potential of transportation.
Yes.
Costs added. And what is the reason for the first year, the Title I is at 67% and then second year it's at 50%?
It's because of, we're reducing the number of pre-K classes at Sammy Hill. And the student enrollment currently, the student...
I see, okay.
The student enrollment in the pre-K class is larger than the enrollment in the kindergarten class. But when we add that, that round of first grade classes, the enrollment would, would shift.
Okay, so let, let's see, the enrollment, the enrollment shifts, all right, I, I'm not, I'm not following, I'm not following that. The enrollment shifts, but so the Title I will be picking up the cost then of two extra classrooms that, that they're not paying for now?
I'm gonna ask Joe Snyder to come because he and Gary Spencer have worked on the budget.
Okay.
Gary, I'm sorry, Gary's gonna come.
As far as the enrollment numbers are concerned, right now, what we're looking at with three-year-old preschool and four-year-old preschool at Sammy Hill is about 177 students. So if the three-year-old preschool rolls off, that would be a roll-off of about 56 students, leaving 170 roughly for the four-year-old preschool. And then if the kindergarten comes in, right now, kindergarten at, at Lonsdale is 75 kids. So basically, that's where the two-thirds, one-third split occurs because you'd still have, say, 120 four-year, four-year-olds, and then you'd roll in a kindergarten class of about 70. These are, these are not exact numbers. We're just, we're just giving you a scenario here. So that in the, the next year, you still have roughly 120 four-year-old, four-year-old preschool kids, but then the first grade would roll in. So that first grade and kindergarten at, at, at Lonsdale right now is about 145 kids. So that then makes it 50-50 as far as the split. Right now, the costs are at Sammy Hill, except for the voluntary pre-K are funded through Title I. So what we're saying in the spreadsheet that you have is that the split then would occur between Title I and the general purpose fund. And so we're trying to calculate what the impact would be on the general purpose fund with, with those spreadsheets.
Gotcha, okay.
So those percentages could change, but it, it depends, and even these numbers are early on in the school year that we're looking at.
Okay, okay. So the difference between the number of students that we'll be servicing today and the projections in year two are how, are...
Right now, right now, the Sammy Hill's at 177.
Okay.
And with the roll-in of kindergarten and first grade from Lonsdale, it would be right at 270-something kids.
Okay.
And 150 of those would be kindergarten and first grade. It's not gonna be an exact 50, 50-50 split, obviously.
And then what would Lonsdale be projected to be?
Lonsdale itself, right now, Lonsdale's at 405.
Right.
And if you take away 145 from that, I think that leaves 260.
And that's in year, year two?
Year two, yes, that would be.
Okay. Thank you. I wish, I wish all of our overcrowding problems could be, could be a service as, as this one with being able to use so much that's already there. Thank you.
One of the assumptions that we've made in the projections is that, and there's the earlier question, is that the kindergarten teachers would move and the, and the first grade teachers would move, so that you don't see in the projections any additional teaching costs, classroom costs. What you see in the projections are what I would term from the business community are the staffing, the overhead cost for operating the facilities.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Owen?
What's the total capacity for Sam E. Hill and the total capacity for Lonsdale?
Right now, Lonsdale is at 400 students and it's maxed out. And I think Sammy Hill, I, I don't, I don't know what it would be.
So we don't have their actual building capacity? Because usually we would have a building capacity and then we could figure in...
Right.
The portable capacity as well. It looks like there are six portable classrooms.
I'll tell you, at, not this year, but last year, Sammy Hill had 233 students, and they're down to 177 this year.
Okay.
So capacity, over the years, enrollment has bounced around at Sammy Hill between 200 and something and 170 and something, and we have empty classrooms there, so obviously there's additional capacity.
And slide six says that we have several empty classrooms. How many is that actually?
Well, as I said before, Ms. Lehman has done a great job of utilizing those classroom spaces. She has a gross motor lab. Her after-school program has, occupies two classrooms. She has a parent conference room. She has an extra classroom. So that's at least five. And then, as we made adjustments to the pre-K class, that would be three additional spaces. And we would have to, she has a demonstration classroom room that would be used for the music, and one of the pre-K classrooms that would leave would also be used for an art room.
Okay, so these are not sitting empty right now? These are all spaces that are currently being used?
She has, she has one classroom that she has marked as an extra classroom, but a parent conference room, I can't, she's here if you want to speak with her, but, so these are all spaces that we could use for regular classrooms. They're not...
But we actually only have one empty classroom that's not being used, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Looking at the Title I preschools, it's answered, that's okay. I understand there's one classroom that's currently not being used.
No, there's seven classrooms that are being used.
They're not being used at all?
No.
Ms. Lehman, do you want...
Okay, so that's three different numbers. I have five, I have one, and I have seven. Okay.
Well, let's let Ms. Lehman speak to that because she is living in that building.
Yes, we have 17 classrooms. Currently, 10 are used for students. We also have a whole wing that's not used. We're letting our shades folks use that, those, those rooms. So there are five on the blue hall that aren't being used. There are two on the green hall that are not in use, which would be a total of seven. Now, we do share those because they are empty. It's silly just to have empty space and say, oh, wow, we have empty space. So we have outsourced aftercare, and we've told them, why don't you use three of those rooms on the blue hall? We've also said, let's use one of those for a gross motor room. One of those we use for supporting our children socially. And then one is just empty, two, I guess. We have our parents' room when we have meetings. We have a lot of luxury right now. We do. So our yellow hall is at capacity. Our green hall is at 50%, and our blue hall is essentially empty.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Looking at our Title I preschools, I only see Sammy Hill and Fair Garden listed. So if we are moving our preschool students to another Title I school, does that mean that they would have to move to Fair Garden?
No, they could, we have some schools, some Title I schools that have space in their school, so they would be able to take those students in their, in their school.
And which schools have space currently?
Yes.
Which schools currently have space? I, I think if we're looking at moving students to other schools, it's very important that parents understand where they might be moving to.
Well, and I would say that that, that is a decision that has not been made. We've looked into it as to see what the, the possibilities are, and Ms. Miller can tell you those schools, but those decisions are, are not ready to be made until we hear from you.
Well, clearly, they can't go where there's no space. So where is their space?
Currently, right now, we have space at East Knox, Moreland Heights, and when the addition at Pond Gap is completed, which is supposed to be very soon, they will have space as well for one to two.
Is it possible that our students could be sent to one of the non-public Title I schools?
To a non-public Title I school? I'm not aware of, are you, which one are you referring to?
Um, I think we have five. I'll have to go back and look. No, we have several, several non-public Title I schools.
You're speaking about the private schools that are receiving Title I funding?
Right.
So she, she wanted to know...
Is it possible that the students would be sent to one of our non-public schools that receive Title I funding?
No.
That's not possible at all? Okay, thank you. So if I understand correctly, we've been looking at this issue for three years, right? So we knew that we had a problem with capacity before we were asked to surplus the land beside Sammy Hill.
So it has, we've been aware that there has been an overcrowding issue and a concern, but it has just most recently come to our attention that they are, they are truly at capacity.
I, I think my real question here is, why weren't we told this when we were looking at surplusing the property beside Sammy Hill? Because there was plenty of room for portables there, but we no longer have control of that land.
That was before my tenure in this role.
I have no more questions.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not familiar with that. I mean, I'm, I'm aware that that land was surplus, but...
Okay, Ms. Etheridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my question is, it looks like we're being accused of not utilizing the space. And a lot of it is vacated because of budget cuts, where you took a lot of the three-year-olds and four-year-olds and you had to take them other places because you didn't have the funding. The problem is not necess, I mean, the problem with Lonsdale is the land. We've talked about this for years, it's landlocked. You've got portables out of the zoo, and now we landlocked again. So now you have to come up with something. So it's, yes, it's been an issue and it's been discussed for a long time. And it's all about funding, it's about budgets, and it's about capital, and it's about being on the list, and it's about growing, and it's about building. So as you can see, we, we have come to the place now where you gotta do something. And yes, they have space, but it's not always been space. I've been up there in a couple, three years ago, when you didn't have this much space because you did, you did have the Title I funding. And I'm glad we can maybe work through this issue, but you know, if we'd had money, then we may not, we wouldn't have had, it'd be great not to have to surplus that property and build, build a building, but we don't have funding. And that would be wonderful. But at the same time, we gotta figure out now what we're gonna do with our kids and what we're gonna do with that problem. And my concern is we got Gilda, who can't be in two places. So, is it Gilda?
Griselda.
Griselda, I'm sorry, Griselda. Who is absolutely wonderful.
Who is fabulous, by the way.
And we need her in both places. So we, I think there's gonna be, we're gonna have some, have to have some additional support because Lonsdale is a very diverse, and you've got not only Spanish-speaking, Karanti-speaking, and, I believe, 30 others different languages in that building. So it's, it's more than just moving and trying to figure out what's going on. And we're, and I'm, and I'm, you're doing a great job, Julie, but I would like to also hear from the principal at Lonsdale because I think she has a real deep concern about how this is gonna affect not only her school, but the community. And so...
Thank you, Ms. Etheridge. I'm Wendy Hanson.
I'm sorry, that's okay with the Madam President, I mean, rather than Madam...
I just jumped in.
That's fine, Wendy, go ahead.
So I'm Wendy Hanson. I'm honored to serve as the principal at Lonsdale. We've got several staff members and family members here today, and I think it, it really is a catch-22 because we, we are overcrowded. We have been for several years. We're, right now, we're expecting to get an influx of kids in from the Lonsdale Homes Community, and Lonsdale Homes KCDC projects. They've got some renovations happening right now where there's some ones that are empty. So as Julie was talking about, we may have 40 kids show up that we don't have spots for. So it is an issue and it is a big concern for us. Our staff, our families, our kids are very close together. I think you're gonna hear that from some of them in a little bit. They're very, very close. We're a very tight-knit community. And as you mentioned, there's not buses, so we're all within a mile and a half. So we very much are a community, community school. And so that's one of the concerns is how is this going to affect the community? And we really need to plan out how do we talk to our community about this. And several of them heard it on the news, and that was the first time when WBR ran it this weekend. So how do we approach this with our community to help talk about what solutions will be? You know, I've been bringing in a variety of people from facilities, maintenance. Ms. Etheridge has toured our school, looking at a variety of other options. Nobody, I would say, is very, is, you know, jumping up and down about the plan because it is a big change, and we're always uncomfortable with change. I would advocate for two things that I've mentioned, and one is, we can't lose pre-K for the Lonsdale community. that I've mentioned, and one is, we can't lose pre-K for the Longsdale community. We can't lose it completely. I know Ms. Thompson mentioned that some of the school, or some of the classes that would be moving out are ones that don't serve Longsdale kids. So I would want us to make a priority of keeping pre-K classes at Sammy Hill, particularly ones that serve Longsdale kids, because our kids aren't going to go to East Knox and Moreland Heights and other schools. They're going to stay right here in our very tight-knit community. So if we can make that a priority of keeping pre-K for us. And the other suggestion or other priority for me, I know it's not easy, but I would love to see this not be a permanent plan. You know, we do have some primary and intermediate schools in the district that are operating very, very nicely, but I would love to see us get on the capital plan, and I know we're not on there, but I would love to see us get on there for some additions. You know, if there's other schools that have gotten some major additions done. If these classrooms transition over, then we can move all those portables that we've got. We can move the kids out of the portables, and then we're no longer a landlocked school. We've got land for an addition that could be built. So if this is something that we could look at in the future as more of a transitioning back, and I think there's precedence for that in the, in Knox County schools. We've done that with Cedar Bluff, we've done that with Karnes, where, yes, they were split and they operated just fine. And I, and I think we can. We can operate, we can work together, we can build some strong school communities. We absolutely can. But for me, an ideal would be that this is not a permanent solution, that down the road, we're looking at getting Longsdale on the capital plan because our kids deserve to see some of these great additions built on as well. They definitely do. And like I said, it's not an ideal solution, but what we're doing right now is not an ideal solution either. We've had other ideas, but none of them were feasible. And I invite any of you all to come and visit Longsdale and check us out. We're an amazing school. We very much are. I know Ms. Bounds has been to visit us, Ms. DeTherich is there quite a bit, and so any of you all are welcome to come out and visit, see what we're talking about, see what we're doing, and see how we are landlocked, and see if there's some other ideas that you might have as well.
Ms. Fugit.
Thank you. I was just going to say, I appreciate your concern about being on a capital plan. Schools go on and off the capital plan depending upon what criteria comes aboard again. What I said was, we're in a crisis, and we've got to make a change, and this sounds like a reasonable change. There are communities that have advocated for schools and additions for years. That does not mean that the Board of Education will never do it, and I think if your community is passionate and continues to work with the school system, that that's something to be looked at in the future. Again, no board can obligate another board to a capital plan. So I hear you. I appreciate your concerns, but I think what we are faced with is an immediate crisis, and how do we best serve it this next budget year?
And I recognize that, and I appreciate you hearing.
Yeah, I agree with you. I'm just saying, they're kind of two separate issues.
Are there any other questions of the board for Ms. Thompson? Did Mr. Oak want to speak to something earlier? I saw, I saw him stand up, and then I saw him come up and speak to Julie. Russ, did you have something you wanted to address?
Not unless anybody's got a question.
Okay, so maybe, okay.
One more question. Thank you, Julie. Do you know when we may start having those meetings with the community? Because I did get a call already.
Well, we would, we're ready to do them as soon as we get the word from you that this is something that you're willing to take on. We're ready to do that quickly.
Thank you very much, Julie.
Thank you.
Okay, and I will turn it over to Ms. Fugit now with the addition to the agenda of this, about the strategic plan.
Thank you. Just, board members, a quick update on, on where we are with strategic plans. So what we are proposing is that we will use the following methods to get community information. So we'll have community meetings like we always do. Right now, we're planning on having one in each district. They would be, and this can, this will come out, the dates will come out, but January ninth, eleventh, sixteenth, eighteenth, twenty-second, twenty-third, thirtieth, February first, and February fifth, to do nine, so that there's one meeting in each district to get community input on, on what the community is interested in. The, the format of that would be, all gather, then go into facilitated breakout conversations, then come back. We would also propose to do one-on-one interviews with key stakeholders. I'll tell you who those are in a minute, and then do an online survey. So we're trying to get as much information as possible. We're proposing an additional meeting with school principals that will follow the same format as the community meetings. It will not be tied to a principal's meeting. It will not be required, but it is a session just for principals, if they would like to do that. And then all employees will get the ability to take the online survey, and for people that, online is not easy for them, we will have paper surveys. The general thought of the way the questions that we would ask, again, and what I would ask is if any of you have ideas about things you would like for us to ask in these breakout groups, please let Ms. Cottney know, because the committee will meet again in December to figure out the questions that we will give facilitators to ask in the breakout groups. But generally, most strategic plans go along the line of what's working well, because we'd like the community to tell us what they like about what we're doing, what's not working well. And then the vision part of it, which is, what do you want us to do moving forward? What are your priorities going forward? And then the fourth question would be, what else do you want us to know? I mean, that may be where we get some feedback about something not going great for somebody's child, something, you know, we're encringing on somebody's property. I mean, that's just a catch-all for those kind of things. The questions that we ask in the breakout would be the questions that are on the online survey. And so that's where, what we're thinking now, and if you've got questions, we're asking that you get those to Terry by December fourteenth. So the one-on-one interviews, because we don't think these people will probably come to community meetings, but we think it's important to have their voice. The county mayor, the city mayor, county commission, city council, the Knox County mayoral candidates, just so they're not blindsided by what's going on with the strategic plan. Then ACP, representatives from UT, Pelosive State, and TCAT, since they partner with us in dual enrollment. And then the workforce development director from the Chamber of Commerce, because they're involved in a lot of our education outcomes. Survey link will be put on the website, and like I said, it'll be given to stu, students will also have the opportunity to take it in their advisory session or homeroom, so that students can participate. Teachers will have an email link. Classified staff who doesn't have immediate computer access will get it on paper. Central office staff, email link, and the survey will be open to the community on our website, open link. Between the end of the community meetings and March the nineteenth, all the information will be, all the ideas will be synthesized. We're looking for someone outside of the school system to do that, so that it's very transparent, and people would look at it and kind of put it in buckets. And then the group would work on actually trying to have a draft of a strategic plan to the board at its April ninth work session, so that it could be approved in May. And that's just, we're trying to give you a rushed, hurried deadline to try to, to try to work on this, and that we're asking each, we've asked some members on the committee who work for Carley primarily, to talk to principals in each of the districts to tell us what date would work for them. We're looking at middle schools in each district, except the fourth district does not have a middle school, so that meeting will have to be at West High School, because we're the only district without a middle school physically in our footprint. So, but, middle schools, we think going to middle schools, there's less scheduling conflict, because they don't have ballgames and all that kind of stuff going on as often as a high school. So that's why we're thinking for middle schools. So that is what we've done so far. If, you know, questions, concerns, feedback, you can give it to me, you can give it to Terry, or ask questions now.
Well, I appreciate all your work. That sounds like a lot. Ms. DeTherich, did you look past this?
Yes. So between January and March is going to take, this is going to take place in two months.
Yes.
Woo!
Yes. Well, the, but we're having multiple opportunities for people to do it, and, and, you know, you can drag this out as long as you want to, or you can try to get it done. And the thought is, if you do the public meetings primarily the month of January into early February, if you have a snow event, we're going to add another makeup date. But anybody can go online anytime and give us their feedback, and we would encourage people who aren't parents to give feedback. I mean, taxpayers care about our schools, and so this would give them an opportunity. They can come to community meetings or go online. And I really personally like the idea of asking students what they, what they like and what they'd like to see. So we're trying to hit all the subgroups. So if there are people, if there are stakeholders that I did not mention, that you think we might need to do some one-on-one interviews with, please let Terry know. But that, that's kind of the plan for now.
So are you going to ask any of the board members to participate, or is that just going to be the staff, do you know?
In what, in terms of interviewing?
Interviewing and helping.
Staff. Clifford who?
Dr. Davis.
Dr. Davis who? Brooke.
Who's doing the interviews?
We've actually utilized Brooke Denard, who is, who works for our Human Resources Department. She's been drafted with that responsibility to interview, to have the focus group meetings.
Because she has a history of.
She has a background.
Working for an organization of doing focus groups. It's not like we just pulled somebody out who said, hey, go ask these people. She did this in a previous life.
She's done this work before, and has a wealth of knowledge in this strategic planning process.
And you just want us to come to the, at least be visible, right?
And so what we do, like we do at all our community meetings, is typically board members go and listen, and so we wanted to have one in at least everybody's district, but board members can go to all nine.
Okay.
It is a lot, but, but it's, but.
I know.
In order for it to be worthwhile, we really want people to feel like they have access.
I like, I like it. Okay, Ms. Teal.
Thank you. That, that sounds wonderful. That's, that's a, a big.
I can't promise I'll be at all nine.
I appreciate what, what you said about coordinating with the principals on meeting dates. I hope that you also coordinate with the board members in their specific district to.
We will try.
Yeah, to, you know.
What, what we're.
We would all, I know, like to try to.
Yes.
Get the one in our district, so.
And, and we will, but with all due respect, I think our first obligation is to make sure we've got it in the school, because I'm afraid our schedules might make it a little, like this could take till June. But yes, I agree with you. As soon as we get those dates, I think we'll work to make sure that works for a board member, and what I would hope is if a, if a school can tell us a couple of dates that will work for them, then we can try to coordinate based on a school board member's availability. Is that fair?
Yes, yes. Are you, will there be any use of the plan currently in place? And really, this kind of goes for, to Ms. Bounds too, in that, are we going to evaluate our current plan, and what, what we, what we did and didn't do well, and what might need to continue into a new plan? How, how does that work?
I think part of that will be based on community feedback, in terms of what people liked, what they didn't like. I hope staff and that kind of stuff will tell us, but the board votes on the strategic plan. So I think what, this is the board's plan, so if the draft comes to you, and it is, that's why I said we hope to have a draft in April, if it doesn't cover everything this board wants, then you send it back to the committee, and they work on adding that. Is that?
Yes, thank you.
But that was sort of a draft.
My first time around for that, so.
Yeah, but it's sort of a draft of what we've heard, and then the board takes a look at that and says, okay, we, we agree with this, we don't agree with this, or something else we'd like to add, because it is the board's plan. These meetings are giving us input into what we want to put into the plan. Is that?
That's, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Fugit, for adding that to the agenda and all the work you've already done on it.
I just thought we finally ought to talk about it in public, not just in board forum.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going on to public forum now, because Ms. Roundtree had to leave early. Ms. Cottney will handle those responsibilities.
The first speaker is Julie Lowe. And Ms. Lowe, if you can, just state your name and county of residence for the record, and you'll have five minutes.
Thank you. I didn't know I was going to be first. My name is Julie Lowe, L-O-W-E, and I live in Knox County. Is that what you're asking? Okay, all right. I guess it's kind of good that I'm going first, because I'm going to kind of set it up for the rest of the people that have something to say tonight. I came with, with some questions, but I really don't feel like those questions can be answered yet. So I'd just like to make a few statements. The proposal this man made has not had a chance to, we've not had a chance as community members, as teachers, as the people in the community to voice concerns, voice ideas, come up with other options than what's been laid before you. We haven't had that option. We just learned about this from WBIR a couple of days ago. So I'm asking you, I'm begging you, I'm pleading with you, board people, men and women, don't make this decision hastily. Let, let's, let us sit down, listen to our ideas. Put yourself in our spots. Put yourself in our shoes tonight. When someone's up here thinking, listen to them with your whole heart, all right? Because Longsdale, it is a school, but it's a family. And I understand that we have an empty building here, or we have seven empty classrooms here. That's wonderful, but just because there are seven empty classrooms here doesn't mean we have to split up our school for it. It doesn't mean just because they're there, let's jump and do this. We want a chance to speak. We want a chance to be heard. You haven't had complaints from the teachers on overcrowding, because we're so used to it. Like, like it's been said, this is not an issue that just came up yesterday. This is, I've, this is my tenth year at Longsdale, my fourteenth year in Knox County schools. So we've known this was coming, and we deserve the same amount of funding, treatment, building as any other child in Knox County schools. Longsdale does. But somehow, we keep getting swept under the rug, and swept under the rug, and swept under the rug. And it's not, it's time, it's our time right now, and if our community members can't always come out and speak, we're going to speak for them, and we're going to stand up for them. Let's see. Like I said, our teachers are stronger together than we are apart. We are an absolute family. I got this, this, these are coordinates that are tattooed on my body for the rest of my life. If you look up these coordinates, they're going to take you to Longsdale Elementary School. That's how much it means to me. I have this, because when I go to the doctor, I want to tell them about my school. When I go out and about and somebody asks me, let me tell you about Longsdale. And Longsdale is that way because we are a staff together, and we complement each other hugely, from kindergarten to special areas, to fifth-grade teachers, to anybody in the building. We are a huge family, and we understand that we might need to be split up, but it cannot be a long-term thing. It cannot. It's not fair to our students. It's not what's best for our students. So we are going to bring our voice to you tonight, and I, I plead with you, open your heart, open your mind. Don't just think, here's an empty building. Think, look at, look at the people that have come out here tonight, and I want you to think about them when you make this decision. And I know we need something new. We need more space, but let's not make a hasty decision. Let's think this through and make sure that Longsdale can stay together. We want to stay together as a family of teachers. We are not a staff. We are a family. Thank you.
Kelsey Likic. Please speak your name and your county of residence, and you have five minutes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Kelsey Likic, and I'm in Knox County. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Longsdale Elementary School. First and foremost, I would like to say that we all believe our children and staff deserve more space. I'm going to talk kind of fast, because I only have five minutes. However, we had hoped for a different solution that would not involve splitting up our school permanently. I'm here to propose a slightly different solution, as well as many questions I hope you will consider. There are many feelings and concerns right now regarding the proposed decision to make Sammy Hill a primary school. I would first like to communicate our disappointment and upset in the county for not relaying this proposed decision to us earlier, a decision that directly affects my kindergarten team. this proposed decision to us earlier, a decision that directly affects my kindergarten team and future students. On Friday, November 24th, 2017, multiple teachers and most likely parents first heard about this through a news article posted by WBIR News. In this article, it directly speaks about my four fellow kindergarten teachers, our first grade team, and a very specific financial plan. If this were to happen, hearing about this for the first time in a news article was not something any of us were prepared for. This being said, it does not seem that this, or it does seem that this will in fact happen. Prior to this article and this meeting, we were under the impression that if kindergarten and first grade were to be moved to Sammy Hill, it would be temporary until Lawnsdale got an addition. Um, moving forward, yes, we are hurt in how the communication of this has been handled, but if you do choose to proceed, we feel that this transition needs to be done right. So I'd like to kind of list my major concerns if this were to happen so that you can take these under consideration. So number one, breaking up the school community is hard. The county previously chose to move our preschool classrooms to Sammy Hill and it was extremely difficult for our Hispanic families. In Lawnsdale, there's a strong racial divide between the two schools. As a result of this, the transition will require our own resources, not shared ones. For example, our own translator that is familiar with the families and can make this transition comfortable for them. Number two, again, speaking for preschool, if the county does indeed decide to relocate preschools to other schools in the district, um, it is very possible that we will lose many of our children going to preschool in general and then insuring larger gaps for our future kindergarteners. Also, if transitioned to Sammy Hill, our children will require their own PBIS behavior team or specialist. It's not a resource that can be shared and our children in kindergarten go through just as much trauma and have just as many behavior needs, so we will require that. And what about the relationships we have fostered with older kids at our school? We do check-ins with them daily and these children will no longer have these relationships with our teachers and us as kindergarten teachers. We are still confused a bit about the money situation. What is this money going to be used for? Salaries for coaches, behavior team, new administration, um, special areas? Number six, our ESL students are also a majority at Lawnsdale, of course, so we need to know, are these ESL teachers going to transition with us? Are we going to have a school nurse, physician's assistant, guidance counselor, Helen Ross McNabb associate for our children's needs? Our children do not get the same advantages as us, constant doctor care, dental care, mental health care. Will they still have these same opportunities? Then we have major concerns revolving around school activity programs, Boys and Girls Club, Girls on the Run, Soccer, Thrive, Hispanic Heritage Night, Field Day, The Talent Show. Can teachers still be involved if at Sammy Hill? Will children have these same opportunities? What school will they be at? How will our children get there? Right now, Lawnsdale is an I-zone school with many resources like community schools directors, an extended day. If transitioned, will Sammy Hill be on the same schedule? Will we get the same resources, donations, food bags, schools, or help from sponsors? Currently, also, we dismiss walkers, after-school programs, and car riders. If both schools are dismissing at the same time, how can we expect parents to be at two places at once? Will we dismiss earlier or later? Young children require being walked by older siblings. How will this work when the schools are too far apart? Will the county provide a bus to bring students to Lawnsdale? And lastly, sorry, I know I'm going fast. Will teachers be transitioned, or will the teachers being transitioned be paid for taking the long hours it will take to inevitably move an entire classroom to the new school? Will we be provided help or moving trucks? Again, we understand the need for more space, although we were hoping the transition would be temporary. If it is in fact permanent, it needs to be done right, addressing all previously said concerns with a plan in place. If this cannot be done by next school year, it simply should not be done. Thank you for your time. We appreciate you allowing us to have a voice in this matter.
The next speaker is Mari Williamson. Ms. Williamson, please state your name and county of residence and you have five minutes.
Okay. I'm Mari Williamson and my county of residence is Knox County. Um, like I said, I'm Mari Williamson. I'm also a kindergarten teacher at Lawnsdale Elementary. We have been in contact with Ms. Deffridge and she suggested to us that we assist with a plan, a possible solution to the space issue that we are facing at our school. Kelsey Leickich has already offered one option that aligns with the county's original proposal. I would like to take the time to propose an alternate solution to our current space issue. We have noticed that in some documents it states that there is no space for additional portables. However, we feel there is space for a two-story addition if the county were to take our existing portables and ba, out in our basketball court. If this is possible, an L-shaped addition with two floors would maximize our current outdoor space. While this addition is being constructed, the kindergarten and first grade teams could temporarily move to Sammy Hill for one to two years. Similar to the 2014 Bell Morris and current Pond Gap addition, an addition for Lawnsdale would meet our needs. There may be some concerns that it would cost too much because our whole school would then have to be updated to meet accessibility and construction codes. This year, we have had to send away a student because our school is not handicap accessible. The Lawnsdale community deserves a school that is up to code and handicap accessible. However, if cost is an issue, an addition is still possible. Rather than connecting the addition to the main building, we propose to build a separate building on the same campus where our basketball court and portables are currently located that is all up to codes. While this is under construction, inside classrooms can either be split in half to accommodate teachers or some classes can move to Sammy Hill temporarily. An addition to our school would address our space issue and meet the needs of our students with disabilities. By considering an addition over a permanent move, we would be able to ensure that Lawnsdale Elementary School stays together as one and continues to be a backbone of the community. This would also guarantee that pre-K is not phased out of the Lawnsdale community in the future and academics, academic gaps do not continue to grow. Thank you.
The next speaker is Griselda Sandoval. And Ms. Sandoval, please state your name and county of residence and you have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Griselda Sandoval and I live in Knox County. I have been asked by some of our family members to represent them today and so I can tell you what their feelings are. Most of our parents are concerned that you guys will not hold a public meeting or meeting or hear their concerns before making a decision. Um, and I will really, I mean, I really hate that I cannot translate at this time, but I would also like to request a copy of this video so later on we can call. Our parents are here present so we can translate this information because right now, most of them do not understand what we have been speaking all night. Another concern that our families have is the separation of siblings and cousins and this is because they depend on each other to go home and make sure that our students arrive home safely. We are a walking community. We do not have transportation, so we depend on families to take care of each other. Another concern the parents have is also during parent conference, most of the Knox County parent conferences are done at the same time and at the same date. So we have parents, they have, we have a family that has triplets and one of her concerns is which parent conference do I attend? So this is a big concern for her. And another big concern of our families is the school resources that we have currently at Lawnsdale. By moving to Sammy Hill, they will lose all these resources like the after-school program. Most of our families are already working families and by taking them away, this, uh, this service will put them in even a harder hardship to them. So, and also like tutoring, the kids will not have tutoring available for them because again, Sammy Hill is not a community school. And also another question that you probably already heard over and over is our pre-K. We don't want to lose pre-K at the Lawnsdale community. And I know we have said, or like Wendy suggested, to be put on the capital plan. I know we are not currently on it, but I really think that you guys should consider putting Lawnsdale on the capital plan because this will be the only way to bring in our school to current code level where I, as a, as a staff with a disability, have to go up and down steps all day long when we have like IEP meetings, I have to go two or three times. And I mean, this is not fair, especially when we have students with other disabilities that we have to send to other schools because we don't have, not, not that we lack the personnel to take care of them, but simply the accessibility to the building. So I thank you for your time and I also would like to thank our families that are here tonight, uh, representing our community and Lawnsdale. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if it is, um, if the board would, um, allow, Ms. Wendy Layman would like to come up and speak at this time, if the board would allow them to do so.
Okay. Is there any objection?
Any objection.
Without, Ms. Deffridge is proposing that without objection, that the principal for Sammy Hill would be allowed to speak. So is there any objection from any board members? Okay.
First, may I compliment Wendy Hansard and her amazing staff, what heart they have, the parents, and I'm seeing so many familiar faces here. Ms. Sandoval, we love our Ms. Griselda. What I'd also love to say is I too hail from Lawnsdale. I don't live there. I taught there from 2001 to 2005 before going to work with the state. I love Lawnsdale. I love the community of Lawnsdale. When I was pursuing my master's degree while teaching at Lawnsdale, I always thought if I could teach, if I could be a principal anywhere, and I think I said this in my interview, that I wanted to only be a principal at Sammy Hill Preschool. They have my heart, the children and the families do. And yes, the demographics have changed, but the children remain the same. It's not just about empty space. When speaking with our community partners, we've really worked hard to reach out. I think a lot of the families were surprised when I was the principal selected to replace Ms. Foster. We worked hard to step outside of preconceived notions and build relationships with the unioned churches, extend the relationships with families from Lawnsdale. In speaking with one of the community fathers, who he himself attended the school when it was the school for African-American children before the days of desegregation, he said, I fear for our community of Lawnsdale. He said, because in the next 10 years, if something does not change, it will become a mini war zone because that stone wall, which is that dividing line that used to separate black from white, now in many respects separates Hispanic from African-American. Just last year, we had children that spoke 13 different languages. They went 28 different ways to different elementary schools. I've been at Lawnsdale, I've been at Sammy Hill now for five years. November 19th marked my fifth anniversary. It wasn't an easy road. It's the most challenging thing I've ever done. It's the most rewarding thing I've ever done. We live out our mission and our vision daily that together, we are actively engaged in learning. Together, sometimes, as I shared with my staff, goes beyond my classroom. It goes beyond the four walls that I, that I teach in. It goes beyond the staff that I collaborate with. It goes beyond my school building. Together, I would, I would challenge you to consider that Lawnsdale is more than just Lawnsdale Elementary. And I know that's hard for some folks to hear, but sometimes stepping out of our comfort zone and learning more about one another is the most important step we can take. And yes, it would be incredible to have this state-of-the-art, brand-new elementary school for Lawnsdale Elementary. It would be phenomenal to have a state-of-the-art pre-K for Sammy Hill Preschool. But maybe, maybe that's not the option right now. And maybe we need to look at how we can solve the problem in a way that is both efficient and effective and serves all people groups and challenges all people groups to come together on behalf of the children and figure out a way to provide excellence for every child. And so maybe, you know, we, we're not going to do away with pre-K for, for early childhood in Lawnsdale. Traditionally, we've only had in the last five years that I've been there, we've never had more than about 60 children combined from the VPK and from Sammy Hill to go to Lawnsdale. The rest of our children went to failure schools. They went to Inskip, Pond Gap, Pleasant Ridge, Bell Morris, Kristen Berry, Green. They go all over the county. So what I'm saying to you is, I love our school. I love the school of Lawnsdale. My time's up. But more than that, I love Lawnsdale, the community, the people, the children, and let's find a way.
Thank you. That concludes public forum and so we'll go to board forum now. Mr. McMillan? No? Ms. Teal? Okay. Or do you, Ms. Fugit? No? Mr. Norman? Okay. Ms. Deff, wow, everybody must want to go home. I will say, just to clarify, I can't speak for all the members of the board, but I do think it's important to go on record and make the public aware that this only came to my attention, the Lawnsdale Sammy Hill proposal, uh, when I met with the superintendent and his staff last week, um, to set the agenda. And then it, of course, was published and that's when the, uh, actual proposal was there and the budgetary note and all of that. And I guess that's when WBIR picked it up. But I just don't want the Lawnsdale community to think that the board has been aware of this for a long, long time and we will certainly take your comments into consideration. And, and nothing has been decided, as Ms. Fugit said. And I have learned a lot the last four years over the capital improvement plan. I lost a huge project in my district to another project in another district and a particular school in my district has been on and off for 40 years. So, and desperately needs, has a lot of the same demographics as Lawnsdale does. So just to let you know, the board will listen, but the board was not aware of this, so you were not the only one that was kind of caught off guard by the WBIR, um, information. So with that, if I have a motion and a second, we will adjourn.
Sure.
Motion, motion by Mr. McMillan, seconded by Ms. Horn, meeting is adjourned.